For the purposes of matters by the public. We have concluded the portion of the agenda that was the shade meeting for litigation purposes, and that process is concluded. We'll return now back to matters by the public. As a reminder, any person making impertinent or slanderous remarks, or who becomes boisterous while addressing the commission, shall be barred from further audience before the commission by the presiding officer unless permission to continue or again address the commission is granted by majority vote of the commission members present. All persons entering the county commissioner chambers must utilize a facial covering. Persons with medical conditions and those that are otherwise exempt from the mandatory facial covering requirement shall be accommodated with a seating in the remote video suite. I think right now we have about 16 cards for in-person, and we have cards coming up from the remote video suite as well. So I'll ask the clerk to take roll call, please.
Commissioner Bernard?
Here.
Mayor Kernar?
Here.
Commissioner Moreno?
Here.
Commissioner McKinley?
Here.
Commissioner Sacks?
Vice Mayor Weinroth?
President.
Commissioner Wise?
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum with six county commissioners present here in the chambers. I'll turn it over now to Commissioner Bernard for matters by the public, and you'll be allotted three minutes per speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first person will be Lorraine Abby Katsev, followed by David Webb Jr.
My name, well, you said that already. I'm a nurse nutritionist, and I have my master's degree in biology and clinical nutrition, and my bachelor's was in nursing. Vaccine mandates are not about a virus. They're about control. These masks are nonsense compliance tools as they're ineffective against viral spread. The real goal is the Marxist New World Order agenda, and they are using COVID to restructure society through lockdowns and such to destroy nations' economies. Leading the charge are the global elites like Bill Gates and the World Economic Forum. They're promoting digital IDs carrying vaccine records to enforce this medical fascism. These shots are not safe and not very effective. They're causing severe injuries and deaths. Only 1% of vaccine injuries are ever reported to CDC's Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting Systems, known as VAERS. But if you multiply the VAERS numbers by 99, you approximate the real numbers of vaccine injuries. The reported ones are 1.5 million vaccine injuries, which means 149 million real injuries from vaccines. Then there's the 120 million COVID-infected and recovered individuals. They have no benefit and lots of risk from COVID shots. The real question is why would any official engage in these unlawful vaccine mandates? If these shots worked, we wouldn't need to enforce, to force them on anybody. So what's the real reason government is aligning in this unconstitutional action for a jab that's failing all over the world? These vaccines not only don't work very well, but they develop variants like Delta. The most highly vaccinated countries in the world are Israel, Iceland, Gibraltar, and the Seychelles, and they are beset with breakthrough cases, hospitalizations, and even deaths of the fully vaccinated, and our media doesn't report this. Published researchers report that 85% of COVID deaths could have been stopped by the many preventive and highly successful treatments that are being aggressively censored and maligned all over the world. Instead, we endure COVID hospital deaths by bizarrely approved yet disastrous treatments like remdesivir and ventilators. We cannot vaccinate our way out of COVID, but COVID is treatable. The vaccines can be health-damaging, and the whole COVID purpose is to microchip everyone for the New World Order Marxism with digital IDs. Wake up, wise up. Enough is enough, no vaccine mandates.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments. A reminder to everybody in this chamber that you have to wear a facial covering. That includes covering both the mouth and the nose. Commissioner McKinley, you're recognized.
I commented earlier about a social media post that was made by Senator Jason Pizzo out of Miami-Dade, which was a video clip from a press conference that there was ridiculous statements like that made at the press conference, and elected leaders were standing by and did nothing to refute those statements, and I don't want to participate in something like that. So those statements were absolutely ridiculous and not true, and the scientific community is the one that our residents should follow. Thank you. And that statement, for future speakers that have any comments similar to the ones that were just made, I'm not going to repeat myself today, but my comments apply to any other similar statements like that.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner McKinley.
Mr. Mayor, we have David Webb Jr., followed by Jay Soto.
I'm David Webb Jr., a local small-business contractor by the county, and also a resident. I've enjoyed working for the county doing water well-drilling for some 20 years or so. There are two bids coming for your approval soon, both of which I bid on and were disqualified for reasons, I believe, are technicality and paperwork. Things have changed in the OEO. In the past few years, some, in 2017, there was a bid, and in the same situation, the contractor was awarded the job, and he had no SBE participation. He, because he was $1 million low. There have been four bids to redo your wellfields for the water department, each one being bundled, it has increased in value. So as it's happened, there have been fewer and fewer bidders. The OEB makes that determination and is supposed to be doing a service to get good value for the county. The third bid that went out in those projects was 12 million. There was one bidder. Evidence that the competition is decreasing. The fourth was the one that you will be approving soon. Two bidders, ourselves and the other bidder. And because I did not compete, plead the paperwork the way they wanted, even though I agreed to meet all the goals and am an SBE, there was no participation given to all webs for the work we'd done. So it's going to be awarded to the next highest bidder for $1 million more, and that gives the OEO now reign over the free market. Used to be in '17, there was a threshold that said if you weren't above a certain amount, then there would be consideration to award that bid. Now you've given the OEO unlimited influence on the free market. So the big guy gets bigger, and the small guy, for my lack of doing paperwork right, will be harmed. He'll have 20 million awarded to him in the past 12 months. The second bid is 18066. You're giving 15 million to a non-local business because I didn't provide enough detail in my bid. So you'll be approving those. I ask you to look at them and ask questions because you're in control. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And also be aware that when those agenda items do come to the board for adjudication, you certainly are more than welcome to participate in that dialogue as well.
Not as a public comment, but as part of that agenda item.
Well, as, as a, as a, I don't want to say one or the other, but you'll have an opportunity to speak on behalf of that agenda item and direct the board's attention to specific concerns that you have in that agenda item.
Thank you, ma'am. I am protesting one, but I don't have much confidence in that process here.
Well, we'll let that protest go through the normal routes, but you always have the right to petition the board in public hearing when the agenda item is up for consideration.
Yes. So I've been on the board. It's a thankless job. Keep it up.
Thank you.
We need you. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have Jay Soto, followed by Nicole Franchini-Wolff.
These are draconian times? These are Orwellian times. We hear that every day on the news. We've heard it for a year. I wonder how many people know where those even come from? Really? I mean, Joe Citizen doesn't even know Orwellian is George Orwell wrote the book 1984. Draconian, Draco, from Athens, very severe, harsh leader. So it's getting to the point, are you of the light or of the dark? Which side are you on? We can spout, it's not about right or left, it's not about science, it's about good versus evil. And I have to believe some of y'all are not married to the dark side. I have to believe that some of you see what's happening to these children. Can you imagine growing up not knowing facial expressions? Masks are normal? How could that be? I keep waking up, I mean, we, is this really reality? I mean, sometimes you just, it's a Twilight Zone. We're living in a Twilight Zone. And you guys are on the front lines, and you have the opportunity to make a difference. What's happening is not okay. And which side of history will you be on? It's not Republican or Democrat. It's not Trump or Biden. It's none of this anymore. It's good versus evil. It's what's best for humanity. It's what's best for these children. People can come up here and spout, you know, all sides of this. There's literally parents that want their kids in masks. I don't understand that. But I will tell you that Nazi Germany started with medical tyranny. Know your history. It repeats. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, we have Alana Monath, followed by Suzanne Bidiscombe.
My name is Nicole, and I'm a Palm Beach County resident of 21 years. This mandatory vaccine passport is a plan to implode the United States from the inside out. This administration, along with its national and local supporters, are trying to take out our corporations, production supply chains, hospitals, emergency services, paralyze our military, end our police, and ruin academics and schools, all by mandating vaccines for attendance or employment. Coercion is not consent. In regards to Biden's Emergency Order Section 2, vaccines for federal employees with exception, only as required by law. I want to make an attention to federal workers, firefighters, EMS, police. Assert your religious exemptions because you can. And those are defined as an expression of sincerely held spiritual beliefs that help guide your decisions. Guidance is available from frontline doctors and the HealthyAmerican.org. Healthy American states, "Every state is required to accommodate religious exemptions because of federal law to do so." Title VII of the U.S. Civil Rights Act prohibits discrimination based on religion, including Muslim, Jew, Buddhist, Sikh, Christians, et cetera. My body, my choice. I will not comply. I do not consent. Where is the Palm Beach County Sheriff? When the other sheriffs nationally are stepping up around the nation to address the rampant tyranny? I support the blue. But the law is being broken by the Palm Beach County School Board and the county commissioners. Where's all the money from the American Rescue and CARES Act going? I think we, the people, need an audit. $290 million. Where is it going? Do you know the term blockchain? Do you know what it means? Recording of information, transactions, and assets tangible and intangible virtually with the potential for misuse. The biggest freedom snatcher is the fact that we won't have the ability for privacy in our decisions. While our currency is being flipped into blockchain and track our every move through the social credit system, the cashless society, eliminating private transactions, free speech, and body autonomy with the vax passport, it's time to wake up. Did you know that the centralized bank that runs the blockchain is run by the Bilderberg Group? And they control blockchain? We have to keep educating ourselves and others on these nefarious agendas.
Ma'am, your time has expired.
The question is, how do we stop this tech train?
Thank you.
And at least get out the bad guys that are in charge.
Ma'am, your time has expired.
Thank you. Thank you.
We have Alana Monath and Susan Bidiscombe.
Yes, thank you very much. My name is Suzanne Bidiscombe. I am a citizen and a mental health practitioner here in Palm Beach County. I'd like to address the access-for-all Wi-Fi system being currently rolled out in Palm Beach County. I can attest and confirm that the following statements are true, accurate, and within my personal knowledge. Since I'm addressing wireless communication, please note that the very purpose of communication, as outlined in the 1934 Communication Act, states that all communication is for the safety and the protection of life and property. On February 2, 2020, the Children's Health Defense filed an historic case against the Federal Communications Commission, challenging its decision not to review its 25-year-old radio frequency emissions guidelines, which regulate the radiation emitted by wireless technology devices such as cell phones and iPads, and infrastructure such as cell towers, feeders, transponders, Wi-Fi, and smart meters, and to promulgate biologically and evidence-based guidelines that adequately protect public health. Children's Health Defense won that historic case against the FCC on August 19, 2021. And here's something very important to understand: Since Palm Beach County is rolling out an access-for-all Wi-Fi mesh system, the FCC acknowledged during its moment of inquiry and opening statement that it was responding to changes in the ubiquity of wireless devices and equipment, that it still had done nothing to update its safety guidelines. The court repeatedly focused on the fact that the FCC ignored significant comments submitted by over 200 individuals that they or family members suffered from radiation sickness. Radiation sickness has historically been overlooked. Dr. Zory Glazier, who worked for the Department of the Navy and studied microwave RF effects as far as back in the 1950s, attempted to caution government officials regarding the radiation illness suffered by soldiers serving our country, most notably due to the technology they suffered from upper respiratory illnesses: pneumonia, difficulty breathing, and asthmatik symptoms. As well as cardiac defects, including inflammation, and psychological symptoms of depression and anxiety, there are at least 20 more effects he and other scientists connect to radiation sickness. I have expressed no matter of mere concern here today, or any other non-substantive matter, but solely matters of substance, of fact, and law. I accept and I appreciate each one of your roles and your office, but all wireless is a complete violation of the Fourth Amendment. All wireless is in violation of the Florida State Constitution, Article 1, Section 23, which is the right to privacy. Per the recent federal decision against FCC, all transmissions above 6 gigahertz must cease until FCC arises from the court's remand to provide a guideline based in scientific substance and reasoned explanation. No authority currently exists for any such transmission. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am.
Thank you. We have Alana Monath, followed by Elise Rivas.
Good afternoon, Alana Monath. According to Boca Raton Magazine, Mayor Kernar called on employers to mandate COVID-19 vaccinations. Mandatory required, mandated, requested, ordered, ordinance, decree, compulsory, policy are not laws. Anything that is repugnant, aka in conflict with, the United States and state constitutions are null and void. Statutes, codes, ordinances, and policies are not laws. They are guidelines put in place for our public servants who have taken an oath to abide by the Constitution. So this mask policy for governmental buildings is for you, not the people. Where in the constitutions does it say Americans must comply with every command of the county commissioners, the CDC, WHO, UN, Dr. Alonso, or any elected official? And Verdina Baker? Where in the constitutions does it say the job of the county commissioners or any elected official is to keep Americans safe and healthy? Where in the constitutions does it give the county commissioners or any elected official the power to control businesses? It doesn't. Therefore, all are in violation of their oaths and the constitutions. Just so people know, any elected official who violates their oaths and the constitutions operate in their private capacity. Now, the maxim of law states that the proof relies on he who affirms, not upon he who denies. Right now, the science, the facts, and the evidence denies that COVID is a threat. Dr. Alonso and the county commissioners haven't produced the science nor the evidence. The Declaration and the Constitution are clear that private property shall not be taken without just compensation. The science is the just compensation. Furthermore, it has been stated that any enterprise undertaken by the public official who tends to weaken public confidence and undermine the sense of security for individual rights is against public policy, and the courts have determined that with McNally versus United States, 1987, that a public official is a fiduciary toward the public, and if he or she deliberately conceals material information from them, he or she is guilty of fraud. Therefore, the law commands that you are burdened with a duty of care with obligation to produce the facts, science, and evidence relied upon as consideration for any emergency measure for any taking of the private property of the people, the failure of which tends to weaken public confidence and undermine the sense of security for individual rights, which is against public policy and includes the deliberate concealment of material information in a setting of fiduciary obligation, of which shall apply to all employees and elected officials of the states, cities, towns, counties, and political subdivisions, including the county and educational system. No proof of the facts, science, and evidence is no proof of claim. No proof of claim is not right. No right equals wrong. You are all wrong.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I appreciate your comments. And ma'am, I'm going to ask you to please remove yourself from the chamber at this time. Ma'am, to the left. Yes, you. I need you to leave the chamber now. Thank you. We'll continue in public comment.
We have Elise Rivas, followed by Bruce Starr.
Just hold on one second until this kind lady's left the chamber. Thank you, ma'am. You're recognized for three minutes.
Hello, my name is Elise Rivas. I am 14 years old, and I am in ninth grade. I am here to speak on behalf of all of the kids my age who do not have a voice to speak up for themselves. I am here to talk about the facts that how mask mandates have been affecting younger children and how they see people. This is causing kids not being able to speak properly since they cannot see people's mouths properly when they are at school. I also have to say that mental problems, as in anxiety, depression, since kids cannot make friends at school, school is not becoming a place of refuge for kids like they were, like it was before. I'm homeschooled. I was going to go to school, and I decided not to because it just wasn't worth it. And I'm here to speak out to say, are you going to do anything for these kids? These kids are not okay. They can't speak up for themselves because they feel like they don't have a right to speak up because they're under the age of 18 and they don't pay taxes. I'm here to speak up to say that I am a citizen too. Don't I have a right? Am I not a human in your eyes? And I'd like to say that I am praying sincerely for all of you, and I am hoping that you will make the right decision for the health of all the children. I yield my time.
Thank you very much for your comments here today. Just one moment, sir.
We have Bruce Starr, followed by Hope Muklow.
Mr. Starr, you're recognized for three minutes.
Thank you very much. I so feel for this young lady here. I had to take my own daughter out of school because she was being forced to wear a mask for eight hours a day. What I don't understand is how you can so arrogantly go against constitutional laws, each and every one of you, and how you can so go against our governor's rulings? How is that even possible? The governor makes a ruling, and you just go against it, just like all the other rulings that you're going against? That would be for the better of the people? How can you keep doing this? I don't understand. That's why I came up here today, to ask you how you can keep on doing this to the people of the county. And I so resent you getting up here and making a statement, trying to quiet us all down, telling us our information about masks is wrong, yours is right, trying to quiet us all down. It's not going to work. It's only going to make us even angrier. Now, I know how educated you all are. You wouldn't be here if you weren't educated. But how can you be so educated about one thing and be so oblivious to other scientific findings, such as masks don't work? This mask that you're all wearing, it doesn't work. What it does do is you get 20% less oxygen each and every minute that you wear those masks. And as you wear those masks for hours and hours, and days and days, you are hurting yourself, everybody here, and tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of students and teachers. I won't go back to school. I will not wear a mask all day long. How can you ask us to wear a mask that doesn't work? Scientifically proven, the masks don't work. Now, if you're sick and you want to block yourself from spreading germs to everybody, wear a mask. But the fourth, everybody else to wear a mask is just absolutely insanity. And I wish you would get on the right side of history before it's too late. Do the right thing. Stop going by what you've been going by. No one can understand why you're doing it. No one can. It's up to you to right a wrong and to do it now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to weigh in a little bit. Rarely, you know, like, our seniors get the chance to be vaccinated, and, you know, people who are over 12, you know, the parents can make the decision of whether or not they should be vaccinated. And they can make that decision. But I have a six-year-old that I have to protect. And so as a parent, you know, they don't have a voice. They don't get a chance to get vaccinated, and, you know, these are tough decisions that we have to make, but I need to protect my six-year-old. And, you know, we have other little kids who are in our school system that don't have that opportunity to be vaccinated, so. And our jobs are going to be to protect the health, safety, and the welfare of the residents of the county. And we're going to do everything in our power to do that. And whether you disagree or not, we're still going to protect you even when you disagree with us. Thank you.
Very well said.
The next person will be Hope Muklow, followed by Mary Frey.
Good morning. Did you get my email?
Good afternoon. You're recognized for three minutes.
Hi, I'm Hope Muklow. I'm new to Palm Beach County. That was my daughter, Elise Rivas. And I just want to let you know that I've been up praying for all of you since 4:00 AM this morning, and I will continue to. Now, I want to share with you what Professor of Medicine at Georgetown University Medical Center taught me. He continually said to me, "Hope, liars figure, and figures lie." What was my job? I represented GSK, who I will no longer ever represent again. Because I did my job ethically, and people like Dr. Seau would open his door and speak to me because he knew I would not misrepresent company data. But there came a point where that company asked me to send a message, deliver a message that was no longer ethical. Folks, you need to wake up and realize that they, the statisticians, are Folks, you need to wake up and realize that they, the statisticians, are very good at cooking the books. And those that really know their medicine study the scientific journals very carefully, and they hold something called journal clubs. And they discuss the literature, and they look, and just because it's published in a medical magazine like JAMA or the New England Journal of Medicine doesn't mean that it's a good study. You need to know who funded the study. You need to know how they powered the study. Please, folks, I'm also an educator, and there's nothing that bothers me more than the miseducation of our children and our public and our safety. I think you need a second opinion. You are hearing from the same individual from a medical standpoint too much, and what you don't know, I do know. And that is, as much as they all claim to be so ethical, it's all who's funding their studies, and none of them are self-funded. Please, 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 put the politics aside, get second opinions, and by all means, stop disrespecting people who differ with you and forcing us and pushing what you believe to be safe upon us. Safety has never been life. Americans don't know how to live anymore. Look me up, hopetheparentteacher.com. Hope Muklow, I'm all over the internet. I encourage you to read my writing. What do I write for? I write for emotional healing because I'm tired of the cognitive dissonance of how we have emotionally abused everyone since 1958. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments. Just one minute, ma'am.
We have Mary Frey, followed by Nikki Brown.
Ms. Frey, you're recognized for three minutes.
I just want to say, we're all parents, and we all have families, and we all care, and we don't want harm on anyone. And my point is, I truly believe everyone should have a right to make a choice for their own body and their own health. I'm here today, I'm representing all the hard-working, middle-class, single mothers, fathers, and decent people that are doing everything right for their children and families. Many people do not show up for these meetings because they do not have the ability to leave their jobs and families. And that has been your ammunition against us. You have been and are abusing your position. You have been ignoring common sense and science with these masks and these mandates, and forcing this against us for compliance and not for concern of our well-being. Because this is for people that have asthma and breathing problems, bacterial issues, it doesn't help. It makes things worse. And by forcing everyone, it's just, it's very, it's threatening. And I don't know if that's the agenda that you're going for, but that's what you're doing. You're threatening just decent, hard-working people. There are many that are not here today but have total disgust with what this overreach and dictator stance that this commission board took on us. We are decent, hard-working, law-abiding citizens, and are aware of the criminal mandate bullying for this. It's, this is a communist agenda that's going on. That's the only way any normal person can look at this. And if anyone can say this is not a communist description, they're just blind. I'm here today to remind you unlawful evil is never successful. This commission board sits and mandates and pushes to take away freedom. Many men and women have stood up and fought for our freedoms. At this time, we are seeing political games being played that are violating our freedoms. Stop the mandates. Everyone has the right to decide what's best for their own bodies and health. There are more important, and I see this, psychological and emotional problems that are happening. There's division between people. People that truly do need help aren't getting help because masking up is making, it's dividing. It's making us become less human-like to each other. And I don't know, is that the purpose, that we're moving forward and becoming robots? But when I look at everyone, it's only eyes and no facial expression. It really has become robotic. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Just so we can fully appreciate your comments, what is it, the mandates that you're asking us to repeal, just so we're clear?
Just follow the science and the science is-
No, but what specific mandate are you asking us to repeal?
Appeal?
Repeal?
For, forcing people, mandating that we have to wear masks and we have to get vaccines.
Got it. Commissioner McKinley, you're recognized.
Can I ask why your head is shaking at me?
Well, because it's probably shaking. I don't want to speak on her behalf because we don't have a mask mandate in this county, but be that as it may.
Well, then, why was I-
Nor do we have a vaccination mandate. But Commissioner McKinley has a comment or question for you.
No, thank you, mayor. I actually, I was going to take the bait too and ask what exactly, what countywide mandate are they referring to? Because we don't have a countywide mandate that's been issued by the Board of County Commissioners.
So, if Governor DeSantis didn't stand up, do you think there wouldn't be a countywide mandate?
You're here debating right now, telling us that we're acting outside of our constitutional duties because of some countywide mandate that we have. So, what countywide mandate do we have?
It feels like you are.
We can't control your feelings, ma'am, but thank you for your time here today.
Honestly, this is out of my comfort zone, and I never in my life thought that I-
Next public speaker, ma'am. Your time has expired. Thank you for your comments here today.
Thank you, mayor. Just want to state for the record, the Board of County Commissioners has no countywide mandate on either masks or vaccines. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. While we're in this chamber, while we're in this chamber, you will wear a mask while you're in this county building, you will wear a mask. If not, you are free to leave and re-enter society and not wear a mask. Ma'am, please remove yourself from the chamber so that the public business can continue. And we do appreciate your thoughtful comments here today. Thank you. Sir, you're recognized for three minutes.
Oh, thank you. I'm Nikki Brown. I'm here to represent Palm Tran. I'm on the planning and zoning board for Palm Tran. And first of all, I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank this commission of Palm Beach County and the whole for the wonderful support you all have had for me. And I don't know if you even know about this, but I was going through a hard time the last couple of months, and I was diagnosed with Hodgkin lymphoma. And I had to go on to go chemo for a couple of months, and this was kind of hard on me. And I really thank Ms. Baker for all your wonderful support. I'd like to thank the rest of the commission of Palm Beach County as a whole. And I'd like to thank Mr. Clinton Force for his wonderful support in helping me through this, you know, hard time that I had. And I'd also like to, you know, like to bring to attention about the holiday hours have really picked on up, and the ridership has gone up, I'd say, more than 50%. We have ridership that we've never had before. And I believe the last holiday we had for Labor Day, I think we had over, I would say close to, for, you know, all roads were like basically full. And I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank Palm Beach County for the wonderful work you guys have done in helping support this holiday hours that a lot of people have been looking for. And it has, it has come out as planned. And I'd like to thank you all for the wonderful work you all have done. And last but not least, I'd like to also put the attention that the route 43, we had the times have changed on the 43 from a half hour to over 20 minutes now, and the service has improved immensely. And I'd also like to thank you all again for the new buses you guys have put out there. And I think the ridership and all the passengers are very happy for this. I mean, I asked Ms. Baker a couple of months ago about putting new buses out because they keep breaking down, and you guys putting new buses out there, and I think the public loves it. So, thank you very much for all your wonderful support. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and we're sorry to hear about the, some of the struggles you've had medically, but it seems like it hasn't kept you down at all, and we appreciate your participation in our government and your strength as well, sir.
We have Sheila Calderon, followed by Kay Gates.
Drew has get to a meeting. Can I just switch places with him and let him go first?
Absolutely. We'll call you thereafter. Mr. Martin, you're recognized for three minutes, sir.
Yes, Drew Martin. I'm here on behalf of the Sierra Club. I do want to make a statement that is not on behalf of the Sierra Club for a second, and that is that I have been vaccinated and I feel fine. And, you know, I'm glad I did get the vaccination. And I wear a mask, and it doesn't bother me at all. And I appreciate the carefulness of, you know, people who do that. I think it's a courtesy, and I don't think it harms people. I think that the, this virus would go away a lot faster if everyone cooperated. So, you know, that's my, that's my personal opinion, okay? On behalf of the Sierra Club, I want to say that we're concerned about the loss of green space and open space, and we're concerned about the upcoming golf course conversion because the Sierra Club has a policy, it's called 30 by 30, and that means we want by 1930, I'm sorry, by 2030, we want 30% of the space preserved, and hopefully by 2050, we'd like to see 50%. Why is that? We think that to fight climate change, the more open space, tree canopy, the better. We think that's a quality of life issue. Trees provide tremendous shading and lowers the temperature by 40 degrees. So, when you take a golf course that's tree canopy covered, and you turn that into, you know, development, you lose all those benefits. Now, you know, oftentimes, these golf courses were part of the reason people bought into these properties. And I know that there's a property rights mandate that's just been put into, you know, you're adopted based on the legislature. And I believe that, you know, the only time we ever talk about property rights is the right of somebody to develop or build on their land, but we don't talk about the rights of people who purchased a property on a golf course because they wanted to have green space behind their house. I think that's a form of property right that should be counted as well as the right to somebody develop on. The other thing is, we're concerned about the canal system at some point failing, and we think that you need, you know, oftentimes, golf courses were the low part of the community, was part of the PUD. And you lose that whole part of that community by losing that. And a lot of people, you know, come in and they buy those golf courses, and then they don't take care of them, and they know, and then they come and say, "I can't afford it." Or they say things like, "Well, you know, there's too many golf courses." But the county actually built a golf course at Bird Aunton Park. So, you know, if there's too many golf courses, why was the county building a golf course? There must have been some need. But what we'd like to do is take those golf courses and turn them into something, open space and green space that, you know, benefits the county. So, again, thank you for letting me go ahead of Sheila. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Okay. Okay.
Did you have a question, Commissioner Sacks? My apologies.
I do. I just have a statement. Thank you very much, Mr. Martin. It's such a pleasure to see you all the time and for your kind words to the members of the county commissioners. Sometimes, it's challenging to be here. But I'll tell you what, I agree with you on property rights when it comes to green space. I think it does, I think it does affect a lot of the property rights when people buy into a development, and they are, by their documents, they are assured that there will be a golf course as part of that HOA. So, we will continue this conversation later, but I absolutely agree with your comments, and thank you again.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. Ms. Calderon, recognize for three minutes.
Good afternoon. It's Sheila Calderon. I live in Green Acres, and I'm appreciating being able to speak today. Back in April, I had sent a message to Commissioner McKinley concerning having our county champion our, reducing our carbon footprint and working on that. I received a response from Megan Houston and letting me know what the county has accomplished. And that was, that sounds good, but we have a long way to go yet. And so, I just wanted to go over that a little bit. I really want to be sure that we are getting to President Biden's Build Back Better Plan to encourage electric vehicle purchases for all, and of course, this is from the county specifically, all buses and any vehicles that you are replacing that a county owns should all be electric at this point. We should, that's the direction we need to go in. And along with the installation of charging stations at gas stations and businesses, that should also be encouraged. This is a very, very important direction for us to reduce our carbon footprint. There's so much more we can do, and I still believe, as I said way back in 2001 in this chamber, and of course, none of you were here at that time. Well, yes, there was. There's a lady at the end there that was, I believe, that all new development should have been and still should be mandated for new homes to have solar and have other lead components in the building of the new homes. This is very, very important to our reducing our footprint. Sorry. And there's still time today to do it. A couple of years back, and I don't know exactly whether it's still true or not, but at one point, the state of New Jersey had more solar power than we have here in sunny Florida. That seems absolutely outrageous. I'm hoping that this Board of Commissioners will be active in working towards the president's initiative to Build Back Better. He's going for, was it 50% reduction by 2035? And hopefully, we'll be meeting the same thing and maybe even better. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, very much.
Mr. Mayor, we have Kay Gates, followed by Linda Smith.
Ms. Gates, you're recognized for three minutes.
Good afternoon. I also want to take a little aside and thank the commission for your guidance and your leadership in trying to keep this county safe in the face of this awful pandemic. And I'm sorry that you have to listen to such a diatribe up here. I came to speak to you today about the environment and the wonderful things I support that the county is doing and to encourage you to do even more. There have been a couple of articles in the New York Times recently, one being the Build Back, the Build Back Better effort of the Biden administration and the American Jobs Plan. And hopefully, these plans are going to come through, and I hope that our county commission and our county folks, staff, people are prepared to make the most out of those funds when they do start to come through. In the Build Back Better, there's so much that we can do in, to reduce the carbon footprint with affordable, efficient housing. I saw just recently that California plans to require solar power and battery storage in new commercial buildings and apartment towers of a certain size. Something to think about. We always are following California, aren't we? But I do know already that this county has done a lot. There are a couple of developments that are in our county already that would support this Building Back Better and making our houses more efficient and more environmentally friendly. The Green Kay development off of Flavor, well, I have to preface this too. I know Commissioner Bernard brought up the issue a year or two, a year or a year and a half ago about more affordable housing here in the county. And that affordable housing ought to be energy-efficient and have a lower carbon footprint. It would reduce the costs for people living there and continue to make it really more affordable for them in reducing their utility bills. There's a couple of developments already in our- bills. There's a couple of developments already in our county that are good examples. The Green Cay development for workforce housing off of Flavor Pick Road. And there's another affordable housing, I think, for really low income people that I've become aware of because it's in a neighborhood that I frequented, off of Hagan Ranch Road, right near Green Cay. There's a wonderful little low income housing development in there. And I'm sure that your staff and your group knows what it is. And we need to support, I'm asking the commission to support more things like that. There's also one other farm I want to mention, a development. It's called Arden Farm in the western part of the county. And it's a farm, it's a development that includes a farm.
Yes.
Thank you.
We are familiar with it. Thank you for your comments.
We have Linda Smith, followed by Patty Tester.
Hello. My name is Linda Smith, and I live in Jupiter, Florida. I want to thank you for my mask. I also wear a seatbelt when I drive in my car. So everybody gets lower car insurance rates because I'm following the rules. Thank you for initiating the pilot program for electric charging stations on Palm Beach County properties. I have been hearing, I think for about two years, about electric buses. To be honest, I don't know where we stand with this, but I would hope that when those actually come online, and maybe they are, hopefully they are, that perhaps it could be announced in the Resiliency Office newsletter. I hope you all took notes during the June 22 Coastal Partnership presentation on the effects of climate change. Not only will you have to do the mitigation to try to rectify the negative impacts, but you also will need to try to slow down climate change and the negative impacts. I do believe we need to protect agricultural and green areas wherever they are, including canal rights of way. No matter whose district it is, I think that the green spaces in our county are precious. Development should be targeted in areas east of I-95. And I'm encouraged by the housing going up along the I-95 corridor. I also believe affordable housing should be energy efficient. As Kay mentioned, it just makes it more affordable for the next decades. We need to reduce fertilizer runoff. In 2012, you passed the Florida Friendly Fertilizer Use Ordinance. Thank you. But I'm afraid it might not have enough teeth in it. In 2000, I believe, you passed the fertilizer ban, the blackout, June through September. Yet this summer, I saw fertilizer with nitrogen and phosphorus sold in big box garden centers without even an informational sign telling people, yeah, you can buy this now, but you can't use it until October. Average citizens assume if they can, that they can use the fertilizer the day they bought it. I believe there needs to be teeth added to the Florida Friendly Fertilizer Ordinance. And finally, on the use of single-use plastic, you will have paperwork in your box soon. I'm passing out information on the Broward County, progress on their reducing plastic ordinance. I also included a copy of the approved ordinance by Boynton Beach and examples of Boynton Beach's pass on plastic pledge, and also an example of the Boynton Beach's Styrofoam stickers for vendors to be able to put on their vehicles, like food trucks, things like that, that say they're not using Styrofoam. I understand that all of the communities around us are doing single-use plastic reductions, and I hope Palm Beach County does as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
We have Patty Tester.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Patty Testa. I am a retired nurse practitioner for 40 years. I have four children. I have 13 grandchildren. And I'm here because I think that your job is really tough. And I'm glad it's not mine. But next time there's a vote, I might try to run for something. I believe that you're making a lot of decisions about masks based on not enough information. And I know there's not a lot of literature out there. So I did some research and I did some digging, and I found an article for you. And I want you to have it. The name of it is "A Mask That Covers The Mouth And Nose Free From Undesirable Side Effects In Everyday Use And Free Of Potential Hazards." This was written in April of 2021, and it was done by the International Journal of Environmental Research and Public Health. It's 40 pages. Please bear with me. Ties it. Back of, at the very end of it, what it says is, "The described mask-related changes in respiratory physiology can have an adverse effect on the wearer's blood gases subclinically and in some cases also clinically manifest, and therefore have a negative effect on the basis of all aerobic life, external and internal respirations, and an influence on the wide variety of organ systems and metabolic processes that physical, with physical and psychological and social consequences for the individual human being." I didn't print the whole thing out for you. I just printed out a few of the pages. I'll leave that here for you guys. The other thing I want to know is, can you please provide me the data that you used for the emergency use authorization? That is what this lady was trying to say. You guys did. You keep on extending this, this emergency use authorization every seven days, and now it's till the 21st. And that way, all the businesses and everybody have to worry because you guys are the, are the experts, and you are extending this until the 21st of September 21. I don't want to go in the airport with a mask on. I don't want to get on a plane because as this gentleman who left said to you, and you don't listen, the masks don't work. But you bring up a vaccination. No, he's talking about masks. You send the lady out. If I gave her a sucker, she could be sitting there watching us talk without a mask on. And you made her believe that it was, we didn't do a mask mandate? No, because you're doing this crap. You're doing these authorizations. So, sorry, I don't mean to get emotional, but I just want to say that I'm a little disappointed. I'm disappointed because I think all of you are professionals. I think you're all experts, but you're not guiding us properly. And I don't know, maybe once Palm Beach County does a full forensic audit, maybe you won't be in your positions anymore. I don't know. But I am definitely pushing for that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Because this is not getting us anywhere.
Just since we're exchanging information, the emergency order that the board is directing to sign is pertaining to the collection and distribution of hospital data. It has nothing to do with any masks.
That is fake. That is false data that you are using.
Ma'am, I didn't interrupt you. Please don't interrupt me.
I just wanted to, I just was also going to clarify that point, that the emergency order that's been issued allows the county to pull together the information and hospital utilization in our county to understand the availability of hospital beds, both regular acute care beds and ICU beds. So we have a better understanding of what's happening with our healthcare system in our, in our county. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Weiss. Commissioner McKinley, you're recognized.
Okay, just further clarification. Any requirements to mask in an airport or an airplane are issued by the federal government and that the county has to oblige by those requirements. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. What's that? Oh, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, we do have, I believe, four comment cards for the RVC room. The first person will be Dagmar Ragon, followed by Elena.
All right, Dagmar. You are recognized for three minutes. Yes, ma'am, we are.
Yes. Declaration of Independence from 7076. We, in the course of human events, it becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bands which have connected them with another and to assume among the powers of the earth to separate and equal station to which the laws of nature and the end of nature of God entablate and entablate them. Distant respect to the opinions of mankind requires that they should declare the cause which impeded their separation. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that amongst these are life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. That to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the concept of govern. That whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it and to institute new government. My constitutional right is to enter the public building that we taxpayers own it. You are the public servants that they are paid to do the job for us. You do not own those buildings. We the people own these buildings. Why today, September 14, around 12:45 PM, I was denied my constitutional right to enter this building by the Deputy Williams, Page Number 5752. She denied my constitutional right, pointing off some piece of paper. That is just a piece of paper. It's not a law. We have right to enter those buildings with socks or without socks, with brown or without the brown. You cannot tell me to wear the piece of cloth here, here, or here. This is my right to enter this building. You created no law. And the law enforcement who takes out of office to defend the Constitution and my constitutional rights is enforcing not existing unconstitutional law? This is a plea to all the law enforcement in Palm Beach County. Please reread your own out of office you took. Please reread the Constitution and understand, we the people own these buildings. Those few people in the commissioner chairs.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time has expired. And we do appreciate your comments here today.
You do?
We do. Yes, ma'am.
But take the mask off.
Is there another speaker following this lady?
Yes, we do. We have Elena. Wow. I think it's Melissa, but I'm not sure. Okay, the last four digits of the phone number is 5472.
Good afternoon, ma'am. You're recognized for three minutes.
Yes, hi. My name's Elena. I've been a longtime resident at Bookertown, where I raised my family. They are now young adults, and thankfully, they enjoy living in Palm Beach County again. The reason why I'm here is basically to urge you to continue the no mandate on vaccines for anybody. Frankly, as a voter, when I go and I vote, I, I expect a lot from our elected officials. But taking care of my health is not one of them. I don't want my employers taking care of my health. I don't want my coworkers deciding on my health. I really frankly don't want anybody else. I think this is a private matter. And it's something that I want to discern with my own doctor, my own family, for my own reasons, whatever they may be. So I'm here just to encourage you, ask and ask you to continue the no mandate on vaccines for anybody. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments.
So I believe it's Melissa who's followed by Cindy Falco DeCarado.
There's no Melissa.
Thank you very much.
Could you, oh, Melissa's not, okay, so we have Cindy now?
There's no Melissa here.
Okay.
Is my time?
You're recognized for three minutes. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Subversive, overthrow, destroy, or undermine an established or existing system, especially a legally constituted government or a set of beliefs. Mayor Kern, Commissioner Greg Weiss, Commissioner Melissa McKinley, Commissioner Wydrow, Commissioner Matt Bernard, Commissioner Maurice Sacks, and Commissioner Moreno, you are all in submissive activity, which is a crime. You are in violation of your oaths of office to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Florida Constitution. You took a vow and oath to protect it, to be for us, we the people. And you are insubversive because you have denied your boss, Governor DeSantis', ruling that says there is no more emergency. We are not emergency. No mask mandates. And yet we find it your duty to stop us, the taxpayers, who pay, by the way, I pay for county and city taxes, I just looked at my bill, for this building. And you're keeping me out of it because I don't wear a mask. By the way, I'm exempt from wearing the mask because I have a religious exemption. I'm a minister of the Gospel of Jesus Christ. And we do not cover the image of God. Nor do I take God's breath that He breathed into mankind that made them a living soul and inhale it back in, which creates a carbon dioxide, which makes my body sick. And you are agreeing with making people's bodies sick. You couldn't care less about anybody's health, even your own, as we've seen you drinking and partying, partying, and living a debaucherous lifestyle. So who are you kidding? Only yourselves. As a minister, I have compassion on you. Because see, the world is already deceived. I want to give you an opportunity to repent and ask God to forgive you for these deadly deeds that you are doing and putting upon the people outside of your own oaths of office, which now you are acting in your own recognises. Please, I hope that you really wake up, and I hope that you have a revelation of what Jesus Christ did at the Prosper View. Because He loves you. He don't like what you're doing. And there are consequences to pay for your choices. But there is repentance if you come to Him and lay at His feet, ask for forgiveness, and change, turn around to a 180 turnabout. Because see, I do love you. Because God's word says that He is love, and I am to love you. I don't like what you do, and I don't pretend I like what you do. But I love you. Because why? You are also created in this image. And maybe nobody told you that, but I'm telling you that today. I'm asking you to really search your hearts, search your minds, ask God to forgive you, and come back to what your first love would be, is from your Creator, God Almighty. As I continue here, you are.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time has expired, but we do very much appreciate your comments here today. Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We do want to thank Pastor DeCarado. Thank you for loving us so much. We do have eight other non-public speaking cards that I'd like to receive and file.
Receive and file without objection. Does that conclude the remote? All right. So we'll go ahead and disable that option. And that concludes Matters by the Public. Very good. So thank you, everybody, for your attendance and contributions to local government here today. We're going to move back now to the regular agenda here on 6E1, Risk Management. If memory serves me correctly, we had just concluded the two five-minute presentations by Gallagher and Priya. And then now we will continue into public comment on 6E1 by members of the public. Also, I want to make sure that my colleagues know that if there are further questions that you had of those that presented on behalf of the applicants now, or anytime in the future would be an appropriate time to ask them. Very good. Are we reading those? Okay. So, public comment.
We do have comment cards from item 6E1. And so we've heard from some of the individuals already. So Matt Montgomery.
Did you want to take additional time? Very good. And you're still available to answer any questions we may have.
Erin Creel. David Daly. Raul Placencia. Judy Aaronz. Tom Gill. Tom Gill. There are no more public speaking cards, Mr. Mayor.
All right, well, this has now returned to the board then for discussion and deliberation. As we sit here, I'll kick off the questions. We have a better context of sort of the complexity of this evaluation, and I'm sure hundreds of other RFPs that are within the same ambit over the years that are very subjective in nature. And I've read through everything that was provided, Nancy. I do appreciate it. And the more I learn about it, the more I come to understand that you're not ever going to be able... In other words, we're tasking the committee with a very difficult task and trying to make something objective that is very subjective. And the comments in here sort of highlighted the difficulty of something like this. I've read comments about each... And they did a great job. I think you were on the committee. All five, I think it was five members, they were thoughtful, they were articulate, they scored to the best of their ability what they thought were the metrics that were confined into the specific subjects and gave weight to their comments. But, you know, here's a comment. Priya has demonstrated superior qualifications as a broker, but has not been in business as long as the others. And then there's comments that praise both sides. I mean, I haven't seen any bad comments. And I think, I don't want to read into the mind of my colleague, Commissioner Bernard, but we have a very substantive thing that was put on to a warrants and clerk's consent And I think this board is trying to delve a little bit deeper into injecting some diversity, whether it's racial diversity, gender diversity, or just new diversity, meaning just new people that feel blocked out from this government and participating. And the more I look at this, I have to ask the question, and maybe it's an unfair question, but what could Priya or any other applicant do to ever distinguish themselves enough in a meaningful way that they would ever be ranked higher than the incumbent that has held this contract for 35 years? Because all I see... What's that?
Forty-four.
Forty-four years. So the contract is like five years older than me. How does someone inject themselves into this government if they're qualified and capable? And I think each of the five members of the committee would agree, at least their written record agrees, that Priya is eminently qualified, but there's very minor distinctions between the two. And I'm wondering, how does the selection committee, and then perhaps more importantly, because we make the ultimate decision, how does the board ever determine to make an invitation for someone else new to give this a try? Will that ever happen?
Well, you know, Mayor, I think that we shared a bit about the fact that we have flipped these long-term relationships through the competitive process. You know, the broker is an important relationship, an important individual who helps us approach this market. And the insurance business is a close-knit business. I think if Aon had made it through to be responsive, you know, the comments probably would have been very similar for that proposal as well. We really need these guys in the top five to work on our behalf. And certainly, if the proposal... You know, I think that we were clear, at least I know why my vote was for Gallagher ultimately. And it really did have to do with the... You know, it was close. It really was close. But Ms. Arons is local. She's here today. Ms. Martin is not. It's that, you know, it's that presence that we've been at the EOC and the folks have been on the ground. And I get that technology is changing, but I'm just sharing a little bit about my thought. You know, just the qualifications were slightly, in my opinion, better for the broker, for Arthur J., than for Brown and Brown. And, you know, the experience with the public sector clients were just a little more spot-on for me.
You know, and I can appreciate that. There are relationships. There are... There is working together over the years, and you haven't been here for 44 years. But, you know, it seems like no matter what's going to happen, the tie is going to go to the incumbent. And it's hard for me to look the Priyas of the world and tell them that we are open for business and you're ready to compete unless the board starts to take a little bit more of a proactive interest in holding our contract holders, you know, a little bit more responsible and putting their feet to the fire a little bit more and understanding that while relationships are great and they're encouraged, they are not the foundation of our business enterprises. They're not. Maybe that is how it is in the business world, where there are not public funds at play, and the CEO can make those decisions however he or she wants. But there is impartiality, and there is the appearance of impartiality, and those are two different concepts. And it would look to an outsider that wants to do business in this county that he who holds a relationship the longest has a hand and a leg up in this process. And some of that is because of the great working relationship that they have with you guys. And that's not something that is a negative. But if they don't believe there ever will be some accountability or a chance at losing their opportunity to work with this Board of County Commissioners, then we ought to not vote on stuff, and we ought to just let the rubber stamp run its course. And what I'm looking at here is a distinction and a difference in strategies. When I'm looking at Page 4, and the AJG score is 84 and Priya's 76, all I see is a distinction in how one business would undertake their broker services versus the other. One would negotiate each market separately. The other would continue to look for innovative ways to reduce liabilities. One would maintain the current SAR. One would reduce the current SAR. And we're being asked to validate the subjective positions and opinions of those that rank these. And I just come away from this process, and I admit that the process was fine, you know, because the process is what was defined and what you guys executed on. And you guys executed on it in a very meaningful and ethical and honorable way. But I can't help but look past the fact that Gallagher, in light of the 44 years, was the higher cost option. And we could say, oh, well, it's only $10,000. Well, they're the higher-cost option, and there was so much confusion about what the real cost was on the commission side that it merited an additional round of meetings and correspondence, which to me speaks to, and I'm not alleging that they did this, but they certainly didn't make it clear what their cost was when they're spending our taxpayer dollars on their commissions. So you have a more expensive firm. You have one that apparently didn't fully disclose what, how they were going to structure their costs, and this is to a committee of very well-qualified people, and they couldn't figure it out right away. And we have a difference in strategy. They don't show up to the first meeting. They don't show up to the second meeting. Whether there's bias in this process or not, I don't think there is. But the appearance of that bias is very much real at this point. And I am the biggest advocate and supporter of our staff, our professional staff, and the thousands of men and women that work here, as this entire board is. But I don't... I want everybody that does business with this county to know that there's a different board up here now. And it's not our prerogative, nor is it our intent, to look page by page at every RFP and every contract that comes before this board. It's a $6 billion government. But I do want those that want taxpayer dollars to fund, you know, their business enterprise to know that we take this very seriously. We, like they do, value relationships, and we do expect them to be active participants in this process. And I don't walk away from this feeling that way about Gallagher. I'm confident that they've done a fine job over the years, but if we just relied upon the concept that those who hold the contracts the longest get to keep them the longest, then why are we doing diversity studies? And why are we trying to inject small business and minority-owned business and women-owned business into this process? They are protected classes, and large corporations aren't. But the concept is still the same, that we want new and bold and passionate people to join our government and be our agents. And we have somebody trying to do that at this point, and I don't foresee any pathway of success for them ever unless this board takes this issue like we are right now and has a very candid and uncomfortable conversation about it. And I think if we boil my comments down and the rest of the inquiries made by this board about what's happening here today, I think it comes down to that concept, that we want new blood, we want the belief that you are invited, and there is a way to succeed in our county and our contracts. And if we just rubber-stamp this stuff, sometimes I feel like that belief should be extinguished because it certainly doesn't appear to be a possibility for Priya or any other qualified company that wanted to participate in this contract. And at the end of the day, you know, we have to make difficult decisions. And Gallagher, thank you for your service, but I have no concerns about the viability of your business and your business enterprise if you lose this contract, nor do I have that concern about Priya. But we have to make a difficult decision, and sometimes it's important to err on the side of how things appear to the people outside that don't have a seat at the table. And I just walk away from this process feeling like their concerns are very much real because I don't see how they're ever going to beat that threshold of stability and momentum and all those things that come with having a 44-year relationship with the county. So it gives you a little bit about how I'm evaluating what's before this board today. What is it that is your recommendation to this board?
I stand by the selection committee's recommendation, which was unanimous. And so I was surrounded by colleagues that day for both of those meetings, and I do stand by that decision. I would recommend that we continue, that we accept the recommendation and contract with Gallagher.
Vice Mayor Weinroth, and then we'll go to Commissioner Moreno.
Everybody up here thinks that we are the best commissioner that's ever sat up here. And we probably wish that we could stay here for 20 years, but there's a thing called term limits. And there is the philosophy of our constituents that after you've given us eight years of your time, give someone else a turn. And I think that there is something to be said, as the mayor said, after 44 years, that it may be time to give someone else a turn. We have readily agreed that neither one of these applicants is in the farm team, that they're both in the major leagues. We've both agreed that they are very well-qualified. And the issues that have certainly concerned me as to the ultimate value of one over the other are difficult to measure. You know, we've measured the years of service. Well, if we do this in five years from now, you know, AJG would be saying, well, we've been here for 99 years, and Priya would say, well, we've been in business for 87 years. The real cost of this is not the premium. The real cost of this is what they're going to be able to achieve when they go out to the market. In the five-minute speech that Brown made, they, you know, they quickly said, well, I think there's something here, 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 here that we can do better. I don't know if they could or not, but I'm willing to give them a shot. And I don't think that... And I said this to you when we had our agenda review. When you're dealing in financial services, it's almost an unwritten rule that you don't have the same CPA doing your audits forever, that there is a real benefit to having new eyes to come in and sometimes discover what the people you've had a long-term relationship with have just not really seen. And I think that we have an opportunity here. And it's certainly not a marriage that is, you know, that we can't annul later on, that we can't make a decision that there was a period of time, we went to another vendor, and the other vendor made a lot of claims that they could solve our problems, be cheaper, be more efficient, whatever the things that they promoted themselves with, they didn't, and we can switch back. And I know our purchasing department is just thinking to themselves, this is going to open the door to every single bidder who loses a bid coming in here and saying, what about me? And I recognize that we may be opening a Pandora's Box, but I think after 44 years, it's time to give it another set of eyes. And I'm going to join the mayor and go in a different direction. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Weinroth. Commissioner Moreno, you're recognized.
Thank you. I am not in agreement, and I'll say why. We have policies and procedures in place for a reason. We have a bid process in place for a reason. And we also have a protest period in place for a reason. And they had five days to protest and did not. So at the end of the day, now they're coming to us past their protest time to protest. And I don't think that's right. So I am not in favor of our guidance here. They worked hard. And if I'm not mistaken, in 2016, there was a contract that was flipped in favor of Brown and Brown. So it's not like contracts are in place forever and a day. So no, I'm not in favor of going against what was suggested to us.
Thank you, Commissioner Moreno. We'll move now to Commissioner Weiss.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, to you all in the rest of the selection committee, I want to thank you all for the work that you do, and I appreciate the opportunity to review your scoring sheets and how you all at least put down on paper your thoughts and the differences. And clearly, we're working with something that you're trying to take something that a lot of things that are actually subjective and looking for objective qualifications, and that's a real challenge. And I think, you know, based on our policies and procedures, you're doing the best that could be expected. I share concerns of my colleagues regarding the length of time and, you know, obviously new eyes and all the other things. But I'm also very concerned about the process and how, you know, how we have this process. And I would... I'm not comfortable just overturning the decision of the committee. But I'm also willing, I think it would be acceptable, to have, to re-release this RFP and have this go back through the process. I think there were some additional ideas that we can add in. I think some policies that could be added in to help objective, make it some other objective qualifications and measurements. And I think that's the road I'd like to see us go down.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Weiss. We may need to explore that option in a little bit more detail, depending on where the board goes. Commissioner Sacks?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree that we need fresh blood. I agree we need WBEs and minority-based businesses, and if there are any here, apply. But that's not the case today. We have two professional August groups who have competed for a very good contract with the county. I do not sit as staff to review the documents that have been already reviewed by professional staff. I did review some of your documents. Thank you, Nancy Bolton, for giving them to me because I did need to review in my own background a little bit about- background a little bit about why you reached the decision you did. I'm not judging your decision. I am only looking at the fact that you did it in a professional and independent and transparent process. That is what we ask of every county contract that comes before us. I can do nothing else but to side with professional process, professional staff. The numbers are up there. It's not up to me to note one is a little better than the other. We have the numbers. They have been scored. I reviewed the scoring. I reviewed the documents that substantiated that scoring. And I will follow that process as I should as a county commissioner. I thank you for your work, and I will certainly go along with your professional recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. Go to Commissioner Bernard. But I just wanted to respond to the issue about the protest. You know, I don't know that there was really grounds to protest the findings of the committee. It seems like the committee did a very good job and, you know, that there wasn't any misfeasance or malfeasance in the way that it was done or the way the scores were calculated. I think, you know, the reason why this is a more appropriate venue versus a protest is that we're really making a policy decision here today about what, and of course, we're asking you to read our minds and how you're scoring things, but I think this is a little bit larger than PRIA or any other company feeling like they didn't have a fair shot or that there was inaccuracies in the way that the process went. And I think this is a larger issue that is more policy-driven than anything else. So I just wanted to make that point in regards to Commissioner Moreno's comments, which were very well taken. Commissioner Bernard.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Well, everyone spoke, but no one made a motion, so I'm going to actually go ahead and take a stab at it and make a motion. And then I'll state the reason why for my motion. My motion would be for us to have new eyes and to appoint the contractor Brown and Brown Insurance, PRIA. So that's my motion. And the reason for my motion is, first of all, Commissioner Weiss mentioned re-releasing the RFP. You know, I think staff worked very, very hard on the RFP. I want to thank all of the staff members on the professionalism. You know, I believe that if we re-release it, I don't think that we'll get a new result because this is kind of like staff's more preference. But the board will always make the final decision on these type of matters. In regards to price, the price for Brown and Brown is less than the price for Arthur J. Gallagher. And, you know, I looked at these, you know, staff mentioned the service team experience and their qualifications, that they're locally, and 86% of their staff works in Boca Raton, whereas Brown and Brown, they said it was 50%. However, when we had the first meeting on May 24th, none of their staff showed up to the meeting on June 4th. None of their staff showed up to that meeting also. And then also, when we were about to vote on the item, you know, not any of them decided to show up yesterday or here today because we have concerns. And then finally, this is a, they've had the contract since 1977. I was born in 76, and I think that we need fresh eyes, and we need to start and try something new. So that's my motion.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Bernard to award the contract to PRIA. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Vice Mayor Weinroth. I'll adopt the comments by Commissioner Bernard and his findings as to why I will be voting for PRIA. In addition, I also appreciate and, from an ideological standpoint, prefer as detailed in the scoring and other documents delivered to the board in anticipation of this vote. I ideologically believe more in the strategies as detailed on page four, slide two, regarding reducing the current SIR, changing the current strategy and structure, and negotiating each market separately. And at the end of the day, no one can argue that either company is not qualified. We have two highly qualified companies. One is less expensive than the other, and one has a strategy that aligns more with my ideological business practices than the other, and that would be PRIA. And that would be the basis for my vote in favor of them as well. Vice Mayor Weinroth, you're recognized.
And again, Mayor, I think we owe it to the record to put objectively why we're doing this, because certainly overturning what was a recommendation to us would necessitate that we be more specific. And I think in my comments, I have said several times that I see the need for, there's a criteria here that we were not able to measure, and that is the true cost of this engagement. And I don't think sending this back for a second round would allow you to address that particular issue. And the criteria that we're talking about now as far as when is too long, too long? Is 44 years too long? Is 48 years too long? Whatever. My argument, term limits tell me I've grown old after eight years. It's time to go home. So my criteria is we have two, in my view, equally qualified vendors here, one 86-years experience, or one with 94-years experience, one with 82, predominantly the same type of business, same type of experience. They have made, Brown and Brown has made, the claim that they see ways that they could save us on our cost of the insurance, and I'm willing to give them that opportunity. And so that is why I'm going to cast my vote for the motion that is on the table. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Vice Mayor Weinroth. Commissioner McKinley, you're recognized.
I don't have anything to add, but I agree with Commissioner Weinroth's comments. Thank you.
Very good. And we'll take a roll call vote on this in just a moment, but if this motion passes, I think what the administrator and the professional staff and the applicants and primarily the public should take away from this is that a tie doesn't go any longer to the incumbent. The tie goes to the board. And there will be times when we rely on the findings and the decisions of the professional staff. But when it's a close call or when there's a need to inject new blood into this process and it's too difficult to discern from a professional standpoint who the winner should be, this board will not hesitate to, and it's not injecting ourselves into it. It is our right and it is our duty to award these contracts and speak and act on behalf of our constituents. And that's the message that I'd like to send today, is that a tie goes to the board, and we will honor what we believe our individual oaths are to our constituents and those that wish to do business with this county. So having said that, we'll do a roll call vote for my rights, starting with Commissioner McKinley on the motion made by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth to award this contract to PRIA.
Yes.
Commissioner Moreno.
No.
Commissioner Weinroth.
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Bernard.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiss.
Yeah.
Commissioner Sacks. The vote is five to two in favor of the motion. The motion passes. Thank you very much, the professional staff, for doing, as always, an excellent job. We really appreciate your efforts in helping us navigate this very difficult decision here today. That will conclude comments and debates on 6E1. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. We're now on to 6F1, facilities development and operations regarding a 450-foot communication tower.
Mr.? Mayor, if there is no comment cards and no discussion, I would love to see if we can't move this forward. 6F1, I'm going to move to approve the First Amendment to the communication tower agreement with the city of West Palm Beach.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Weinroth on 6F1 as published, seconded by Commissioner McKinley. No further comments. All in favor? All opposed? That item passes seven to zero. We're still on facilities development and operations on 6F2 regarding a concessionaire lease.
Seeing no lights on and no comment cards, I'm going to move 6F2, motion to approve the First Amendment to the concessionaire's lease, R. 2019-0156 dated January 15, 2019.
Motion by Vice Mayor Weinroth on 6F2 as published. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner McKinley. There's no public comment or comments by members of the board. All in favor? All opposed? The item passes seven to zero. We're now on 6F3, facilities development and operation. Vice Mayor Weinroth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Commissioner, Mayor. I will move the approval of 6F3 A and B for the adoption of a resolution and approval of the Third Amendment to the lease with Floral Acres LLC.
Very good. The motion has been made by Vice Mayor Weinroth on 6F3 A and B. Commissioner Weiss, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'll second that, but I had a question that came up in my review yesterday in regards to the rental rate because my understanding, didn't we approve another site in the last, I want to say the last couple of meetings that was at a much lower per-acre rent?
Certainly. So, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. This is Mia Jella, Director of Facilities Development and Operations. With me is Ms. Burbie Bugaira, Director of PRM. Yes, back in July of this year, we brought to the board an item that was approved. It was an extension to an existing lease. We did not address at that time anything related to the rent. The rent had been established at the inception of the agreement, and it had been modified back in 2010. The rate for that agreement, that lease, was five, and is, $500 per acre. There is a difference between the rates that are established for row crops and for nursery operations, so that's why you see a variation.
All right. I appreciate that. I guess I picked that up, and nobody was available yesterday to be able to clarify that. So thank you for clarifying.
Of course.
All right. The motion has been made by Vice Mayor Weinroth and seconded by Commissioner Weiss on 6F3 A and B. There is no further comments by members of the board. All in favor? All opposed? That motion passes seven to zero.
Mayor, I'm going to move 6G1, but I'm going to go forward and make a comment about it because this is something that's very exciting for our residents. There's a motion in front of us now for authorizing the code enforcement lead amnesty program, which is going to allow the county, which has over 1,000 outstanding code enforcement liens on residential and non-residential properties, to have 100% of the outstanding lien balances forgiven and the liens released. And the program, if we approve it today, will run from October 1, 2021 to November 30, 2021. And in order for a property owner or lien holder to participate in the program, the property must be in compliance with all county codes, file an application before November 30, 2021, and pay a $250 non-refundable application fee.
Very good. Thank you, Vice Mayor Weinroth, for moving 6G1 forward. Commissioner McKinley, you're recognized.
I'm going to go ahead and second that motion. I think this is fantastic, and I applaud county staff for coming up with this idea. And I would ask, there are some major violators in my district, particularly in heritage farms and in the acreage, that we do everything we can to alert the public that this program is available, public service announcements, press releases, social media postings, and specific outreach to our partner agencies in those areas that have high numbers of violations.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner McKinley, who has seconded the motion. Commissioner Sacks, you're recognized.
Thank you. And that's a very good point, Commissioner McKinley. How do we, when someone has a lien because of code violations, they're notified. Now, will we now go through the process, same process as notifying them that they have a lien, that their lien is now forgiven? Is that going to be your process?
So it's not an automatic forgiveness. They do have to fill out an application, make a $250 application fee.
I saw that.
So we will send a memo out to everyone with an application. Code enforcement, we've also are developing a hang tag, so our code enforcement officers will go out to the physical properties and hang something on their doors that this is available to them. We plan to do some of the same things that Commissioner McKinley just mentioned, so they will be notified. Now, whether or not they'll fill out the application, but we'll do everything we can to get them to fill out.
So two things. One, you're going to notify them, you said by memo?
By mail.
By mail?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And second thing is, you're going to go physically to the premises and put a notice there.
Correct.
And will there also be included in that notice a telephone number that they can call if they need any help with regard to the process itself?
Also, the application will be available online, so we'll have the address, the website, where they can go online and fill out the application online.
Excellent. Thank you. Good program.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. Commissioner Moreno, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to make it clear that this is only for people who are now in compliance.
Or becoming in compliance during the time period.
And we're giving them 60 days to come into compliance.
Correct.
And they will have a physical inspection of their properties.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Moreno. The motion pending has been made by Vice Mayor Weinroth on 6G1 for approval, as published, seconded by Commissioner McKinley. I don't see any further comments. All in favor? All opposed? The item passes seven to zero. Thank you to OFMB, to PZMB for your work on this really COVID-19 relief program. It's very well taken, and we're very appreciative.
Thank you.
Mayor, before we recess as a board of county commissioners to become Child Care Facilities Board, I'd like to move 6H1 for approval.
Second. Ramsey, did you have any comments? I felt like I cut you off a little bit.
No.
All right. And I wanted to highlight that, well said, that they now have a button and a light up here for PZMB and the other departments that are always raising their hand and never get recognized, so how exciting. Thank you again.
Right. I'll try not to abuse it.
Have at it. I do think we're going to take some comments by Ms. Dorit Miller, Assistant County Administrator on this item, if the board will indulge, on 6H1.
Good afternoon, Mayor and the board. Dorit Miller, Assistant County Administrator. With me, I have Elise Michel, Elise, and also Denise from Westgate CRA and also our attorney. It has been a long day. The PowerPoint presentation was provided to the board, but I will just ask Elise to say some kind words. He has been working diligently on the Westgate CRA, and he has done an awesome job with the board. If you drive through Westgate, you will see a number of homes and development taking place. And so thank you for giving him the opportunity to make some comments.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and Administrator Baker. It's a pleasure for us to be here. We are not going to go to the presentation. Denise probably going to prepare the annual report for the 2021, and will include some of the pictures that we are going to share with you tonight. I just want to say thank you for your support, and would like to thank all the county department who has helped us with everything that we are doing in the Westgate community. Thank you very much.
Very good. And I know that the board is well aware of the hard work and commitment that Commissioner Bernard and Commissioner Weiss have put into assisting and attracting new developers and new businesses to the CRA. And I want to make sure that they had an opportunity to speak as well or make any motions.
Do you need a motion on this?
I think the motion's been made by Vice Mayor Weinroth.
So I'll go ahead and, I'll second the motion, but I wanted to just reach out to you all and let you know how, I mean, you're doing tremendous work. I mean, every time I drive through there, I see new things being built and other investments being made. It's just a tremendous opportunity you all have, and to watch you move forward with so many of these plans and, you know, with the infrastructure. move forward with so many of these plans and the, you know, with the infrastructure that previous boards had helped fund to put in place, that is now allowing all this to come to fruition, but as you know, I mean, we're clearly short on housing in this county, and it's wonderful to see all the new homes, multi, some of them multifamily, going in and into your, into your CRA, so, congratulations.
Thank you.
Very good, Commissioner Bernard, you recognize, sir?
Thank you, Ms. Moreno, I just want to thank you for being here, I know you've been here since 9:30, and now it's four o'clock, but, although it's late, but we want to thank you for the hard work, and we're approving this because of the hard work Dorit and your whole staff has been doing, thank you very much.
Yes, and it's a CRA that even Ms. Baker can get behind. All right, well, the motion on 6H1 has been made by Vice Mayor Weinroth and seconded by Commissioner Weiss, there's no further comments, all in favor, all opposed, passes seven to zero, thank you very much for your hard work and being here today.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, recess now as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Child Care Facilities Board to take up Agenda Item 7A1 regarding a motion to approve the new appointment of one member and a reappointment of three members to the Child Care Advisory Council as published. Are there any questions, or is there a motion?
I'll go ahead and move that motion, and just say it looks like I'm the only one who got the emails to sign the forms.
Well, that's just us exhibiting our extreme deference to you, Commissioner McKinley. We have a motion by Commissioner.
A lot of childcare bills, so I'm familiar with their services.
A motion by Commissioner McKinley and seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth on 7A1 as published, no further comments by members of the board, all in favor.
Mayor, before you do that, it's only two members, not three, so you want to read that?
I do not have the revised.
Three, not four, right?
So, it's a.
My apologies, so is it just 1, 5, and 7?
It's a new appointee of one, new appointee of one member and a reappointment of two members, is that correct?
Yeah, those are for seats 1, 5, and 7.
Correct.
Very good, so, the motion is, the revised motion in summary on 7A1 made by Vice Mayor Weinroth and seconded by Commissioner McKinley, no, made by Commissioner McKinley and seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth, no further comments, all in favor, all opposed, that passes seven to zero. Thank you for your patience, everybody, we'll adjourn as the Child Care Facilities Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners for Board Appointments on 8A, Commission District Appointments, we'll start to my right with Commissioner McKinley.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Gloria Kelly to the Library Advisory Board.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner McKinley, seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth, all in favor, all opposed, that appointment passes seven to zero. Commissioner Moreno.
Thank you, Mayor, I would like to reappoint William Quinn to the Emergency Medical Services Advisory Council.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Moreno, seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth, all in favor, all opposed, that appointment passes seven to zero, Vice Mayor Weinroth.
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to appoint James Hanson to the Discover the Palm Beaches Board.
Motion by Vice Mayor Weinroth, seconded by Commissioner Weiss, all in favor, all opposed, passes seven to zero, I'm hopeful that Vice Mayor Weinroth will make a motion to appoint Chief Sarah Mooney to the Palm Beach County Sports Commission.
I was going to do that.
Wonderful, and I'm hopeful that Commissioner Bernard will second that motion, all in favor, all opposed, that appointment passes seven to zero, Commissioner Bernard.
No appointments, Mr. Mayor.
Very good, Commissioner Weiss.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, I'd like to appoint Rick Rose to Discover the Palm Beaches Board.
Motion by Commissioner Weiss, seconded by Commissioner Sacks, on that appointment, all in favor, all opposed, appointment passes seven to zero, Commissioner Sacks. Very good, that will conclude 8A, Commission District Appointments, we'll move down to 9A1, and I'll turn it over to our newly retained county administrator.
Again, thank you, and thank the staff, in the essence of time, I'm simply going to ask the Board to receive and file the directive.
So, move.
Motion by Vice Mayor Weinroth, seconded by Commissioner Sacks, to receive and file 9A1, update Board Directive by the County Administrator, all in favor, all opposed, it passes seven to zero, further comments, ma'am? Madam Administrator, any further comments?
Oh, I'm sorry, no.
You've got nothing to say after all, all of this today?
I'm tired.
All right, county attorneys.
I'll say some stuff on behalf of Verdina, I wanted to congratulate you, Verdina, on your extension and all that came with it, and just a quick note to the Board, I was going to retire at my 30th year, but I extended five years in drop so I could work with Verdina and get some stuff done, and we all know what happened, not much of it did, and I'm retiring next month, because who anticipated COVID, the surtax, everything, and I'm just grateful that, you know, for Verdina's benefit, that she can actually carry out some of those things, and wish you the best.
This isn't your last meeting, right?
No, but it's just so timely to say, I got into drop to work with Verdina to get the things done, and COVID, you know, our lives turn upside down, it can happen, you know, on something else.
Well, if we get a drop waiver, would you, do you want to stay?
No.
Okay.
I will have more meetings to talk about that.
Our duty of candor is reestablished, thank you very much, any further comments? Commissioner McKinley.
Oh, sorry, I need to make one motion, then I'll go to my comments, I'm going to go ahead and group my off-site proclamations together and make a motion requesting off-site proclamations recognizing the 30th celebration of South Florida Fairs' Yesteryear Village, and invite you all to come out to that on Saturday, declaring October 3rd through the 9th, 2021, as National For-Age Week in Palm Beach County, and also recognizing the 80th anniversary of the city of South Bay.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner McKinley for three off-site, off-site proclamations as published, seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth, all in favor, all opposed, they pass seven to zero.
And then, Commissioner, Mayor, my, my only comment, as staff starts to assemble our legislative agenda for the 2022 legislative session, based on some of the comments today and the clear lack of understanding of the roles of local government and state government and the federal government, and what other elected bodies such as the school board and individual cities are allowed to do, there have been several attempts to legislate a civics education requirement, I think that we should put that in our legislative agenda for the 2022 session, thank you, that would be staff correction.
All right, we'll look forward to that coming back, no further comments? Very good, Commissioner Moreno, you recognize for your comments.
Thank you, Mayor, I have two proclamations, so I would request an off-site proclamation declaring September 20th to 24th, 2021, as Septic Smart Week in Palm Beach County, and I request an off-site proclamation declaring September 17th through the 23rd, 2021, as Constitution Week in Palm Beach County.
Motion by Commissioner Moreno, seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth for two off-site proclamations as published, all in favor, all opposed, that item passes seven to zero.
I'd also like to say, Verdina, I look forward to working with you for another, I guess now it would be six years, I look forward to that, and also, I would just like to reflect on our lively discussions today, and what is good for our constituents is to know that we actually can work as a Board of Seven County Commissioners and have differences of opinion, but at the end of the day, we can go and have a drink, not talking business, of course, because we're not going to break sunshine, but we do enjoy each other's company, and it's spirited, and it's important for us to do this, because we are allowed to have discourse, but it has to be, kind is not the right word, cordial, and I look forward to, respectful, thank you, Vice Mayor Weinroth, and I look forward to that for the next several years, thank you.
Absolutely, and thank you for that sentiment, I think it is true here in this government, and it should be true in other governments as well, all right, we'll go back to my left, Commissioner Sacks.
Thank you, Mayor, I have a couple of off-site proclamations, at first, following up on Justice Sandra Day O'Connor, and of course, on Melissa McKinley, in that order, who, we need a civics course in our, in our schools, so I am doing a request for off-site proclamation recognizing September 13th to 17th, 2021, as Florida Civics Week in Palm Beach County, also an off-site proclamation declaring September 27th through October 3rd, 2021, as Diaper Need Awareness Week in Palm Beach County, again, a request for off-site proclamation declaring September 2026, 2021, as Deaf Awareness Week in Palm Beach County, and finally, a request for an off-site proclamation declaring September 2021 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Palm Beach County, let me just mention that a former City Commissioner, Daniel Son, has, has been a great proponent and advocate for the Florida Civics Week in Palm Beach County, and I look forward to making that part of our legislative, our legislative advocacy for, for our state legislative, and he happens to be here right now, to my left, thank you, former Commissioner Daniel Son, thank you for, for coming here and for giving us this proclamation, thank you.
Very good, we have a motion by Commissioner Sacks for four off-site proclamations as published, seconded by Commissioner Weiss, all in favor, all opposed, those pass seven to zero, we're delighted to have you here, Councilman Son, if you wanted to make any comments to the Board regarding the proclamation, we'd be delighted to have you speak.
Well, good, good evening, it has been a lively day in Palm Beach County, here at the County Commission Chambers, I know most of you, Senator Sacks, thank you so much for, for authoring this or bringing it to your, your colleagues for approval, two years ago, I set out on a journey to form, with a vision, of establishing a statewide entity focused on civic education through civic edu, focused on increased civic participation through civic education, and today, that becomes a reality, you join 13 other Florida governments, local governments across the state, recognizing the first annual Florida Civics Week program, put on by the Florida Center for Civic Engagement, and so, we look forward to next year, bringing to you programming for your communities at no charge, to, to make sure that we are increasing civic participation in your, in Palm Beach County. As I travel this state, I've been blessed with looking at being in many of these chambers, and they're breathtaking, but I get more and more excited as I go, knowing that the programming that we're going to offer as an organization in partnership with your, your, your organization, how many more people will be able to step aside, maybe for the first time, into these chambers to be engaged, and so, as I sat through your County Commission meeting this morning, I know a lot of those comments were hard to hear, because I once has sat on that other side of the dais, but I, I want everyone to know that is still watching this County Commission, that I know that these people up on this dais, I know them well, I know them personally, you believe that this is a government for the people and by the people, and you appreciated every comment, and everyone that came before you today, so with that, I say thank you for recognizing Florida Civics Week, we look forward to working together to make sure that we get your communities engaged, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, and thank you for your comments here today, Commissioner Sacks, and further comments?
A number of years ago, former, former Chief Justice Sandra Day O'Connor came to Tallahassee, and I was, I had the great opportunity to introduce her to a full legislature and the Florida Supreme Court, she had the idea that we need to teach civics in our classrooms, that was approximately 12, 13 years ago, and still today, people of this county are very well intentioned, but they do not know the differences in, in what governments do, and if there is anything that is as important in a democracy, it is to have an educated constituency, because without an education, educated constituency, we cannot have a proper representative government, so, I encourage everybody to, to promote this idea of civics education, and only this way, we can move forward as a country, it starts right here, Palm Beach County, thank you, Mayor, thank you.
Very good, thank you Commissioner Sacks for those comments, we'll go now to Commissioner Weiss.
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to request two off-site proclamations, declaring, first one declaring September 18th, 2021, as Jack the Bike Man Day in Palm Beach County, and secondarily, declaring September 13th through 17th, 2021, as National Disability Voter Registration Week in Palm Beach County.
Very good, we have a motion by Commissioner Weiss for two off-site proclamations as published, seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth, all in favor, all opposed, passes seven to zero, further comments, sir?
Thank you very much, I'd like to extend my sincere thanks and gratitude to Vice Mayor McGovern and the council members from the Village of Wellington for putting together just a, a really moving and special presentation and dedication this past Saturday regarding 9/11, 20 years ago, and also, I want to recognize the Fire Chiefs, Palm Beach County Fire Chiefs Association for their event held in Royal Palm, Royal Palm Beach, both of them were reminders of really, both a very difficult time in our history, but also a reminder of how this country can pull together over very difficult situations and circumstances, which we are unfortunately going through again, and I look forward to working with our community to help us make sure we all get through this pandemic as healthy as we can, and so, and I thank staff for everything you all have been doing, I just, I couldn't, I can't thank you all enough, I mean, I get compliments in my office for the awesome work, County Administrator, that your staff does each and every day, so, thanks to them, please share my gratitude with them.
Very good, thank you Commissioner Weiss, Commissioner Bernard.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, first, I want to congratulate all of the universities in the state of Florida for improving their ranking among public universities, and especially, I, I think FSU went from, I believe, 20th to 18th in the college ranking, and also, Ms. Baker's favorite university of Florida, cracked the top five in public universities, so, which is, which is great for the state of Florida in terms of the ranking of all the universities improving in the state of Florida, and then finally, beginning tomorrow, September 15th through Friday, October 15th, is National Hispanic, Hispanic Heritage Month, and someone sent me a picture, so I want to say, "Todos Unidos", thank you.
Very good, thank you Commissioner Bernard, Vice Mayor Weinroth.
Thank you, yeah, it's been a long day, but I think we've been very productive, and I think the discussion we had, as Commissioner Moreno said, about the insurance, I think it was an important discussion, because we're not robots, we don't just make decisions based upon numbers, but we make decisions based upon a lot of factors, that's why there's seven of us up here, that's why it's not just made, you don't just make the decision based upon the calculation of who got the most points, I think the decision we've made here today, and as like Commissioner Moreno said, we may not have all agreed on it, but at the end of the day, we respectfully debated this, and I think we came to the right decision for our county, and hopefully, they will demonstrate as the new carrier or the new broker for us, that they can be a, a partner for us and help us save money on our property and casualty. Commissioner Sacks, in your civics lessons, I hope that you will impress upon people two things, one, that there's a thing called preemption, and sometimes, we don't get to make rules, and people who've come in here to complain about having to wear masks on the airplanes and such, need to understand that that has been decided by powers that are beyond our ability to control, and the second thing, or maybe the first thing you should do, is talk about home rule, this home rule is something that the legislature approved in 1973, and notwithstanding the fact they seem to keep forgetting about home rule and keep on running over us, home rule is a cherished idea in Florida, and the idea that we can make decisions at the local level that are affecting us at the municipalities, at the counties, it's important, and I think that what we do in this chamber is the most important stuff as far as what our residents are going to see affecting their lives on a day-to-day basis, so I think that if you can impress upon people both preemption and home rule, those would be two great lessons, and finally, Commissioner Weiss, I, I too, like you, reflect upon 911, the, 20 years ago, I remember where I was when the World Trade Center is, I think we probably all remember, I remember where I was. I remember where I was when Kennedy was shot. I remember where I was when the Challenger blew up, and I remember where I was when the towers fell. But we were so patriotic then. I remember cars driving around with flags on, and people really felt united against a common enemy, and I think we've lost that, and I think we've lost the ability to have respectful debate. And there's nothing wrong with people coming up here during matters by the public and disagreeing with us, but I think we all are just asking people to take a breath, have your position, understand that we have taken a position that we think is right. We may not be perfect, but the seven of us are working towards keeping our residents as safe as possible, and this pandemic will someday be in the rearview mirror. It may be an endemic. We may have this for, like the flu, forever, but we will get past this, and I thank everybody for their, their, their hard work today.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Weinroth. Commissioner Weiss?
Thank you. I just, and there was one other note, and I, and I failed, I skipped it on my sheet here, and that is, I just, for those that are practicing, wishing you and your families all are, as we come into Yum Khor on Thursday, sealed in the book of life. Thank you.
And thank you for that, Commissioner Weiss.
And an easy fast.
An easy fast. And thank you for your comments and your great work today to my colleagues on the Board. And yes, I'm delighted that, that we have a top-five university, national university in our state. I'm delighted that all the universities rose in their rankings, and I'm particularly proud that they're all affordable and accessible by our Florida students and children. I just wanted to follow up briefly on the comments made by my colleagues on the Board regarding some of the comments made by those in the public at Matters by the Public today. And it, you know what, it is very concerning, some of the things that happened today. I had to remove someone from the chamber. It's not something that I take lightly. It wasn't because of their, their speech, but because of their conduct and their unwillingness to wear a mask. And we can debate whether, you know, the masks are effective or not. I don't think anyone takes exception with the robust and real debates that we have amongst ourselves and amongst the public about the policy decisions that we make. But what has become frightening and concerning, and I was taken aback today to see the objective disinformation that is spoken to as truth by members of the public on occasion about things that are just not true. And I don't want to talk about whether the vaccine has a microchip in it. I think a lot of the public just understands that that's silly, but when you come to a unit of government like the Board of County Commissioners, and you plead and pray for us and ask us to repeal things like a mask mandate that don't exist, it speaks to the disinformation and how powerful it is, because those people really believe, although they're unwilling to educate themselves on basic concepts about government before they come and speak at a podium where words should be true and meaningful, they continue to come here, and we'll sit here as long as we have to. We all appreciate and respect the right of matters by the public, and it's not just here that we do it. We do it in our offices and by email and out in public and at the grocery store. But what has become a bit scary and a bit concerning is the constant misinformation, disinformation, and outright confusion that many people have and hold about government and what our actions are or are not. And so, I appreciate your conduct today. Generally, we, I don't engage in the back and forth, but I think we all felt compelled today, to a certain degree, to simply correct the record so that we're speaking about basic objective facts. And if we don't have that as part of our process and our dialogue, then our systems of governance and our democratically-elected leaders, it just won't work. So we need to continue to encourage those that participate in democracy to do it responsibly and to do it based upon facts that, as they exist. Otherwise, the challenges ahead of us are much larger than COVID-19, and they're much larger than decorum and civility. It is an issue of calling something that is green-yellow, or that the world is flat and not round, and it's hard for society to progress through the most challenging times, never mind the easiest, easiest of times, if we're not going to speak honestly and candidly amongst ourselves as elected leaders and when they speak to us as members of the public. So thank you for your work here today, and the Board of County Commissioners is adjourned.